Recent resignation of trustee Dr. Don Weiss. And so, the format today is that each of our candidates will have an opportunity to appear before the board and provide a personal address of about five minutes in length and then we'll enter into a question and answer session wherein the trustees will have an opportunity to ask questions. We anticipate that that session will last approximately 15 minutes for each candidate. And so, hopefully, we can adhere to the schedule. And I apologize that we're already running a little bit behind.
No problem.
Our morning meeting went a little bit over. So, with that, I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you very much. And thanks to all of you for giving me the opportunity to come before you. I appreciate it very much. I saw the list of the 25 candidates who applied, and just to be one of the five finalists is quite an honor. So, thank you. I'd like to talk to you about two things today. First of all, why did I apply? And then, out of the remaining five candidates, why is Mike Lally the right person to assume trustee Weiss's position here on the Board of Trustees? I've had a great passion since I was very young for public service. I've had a chance to serve here in the community on the Overland Park City Council and other walks of life in a public service capacity. Hopefully, when I've done it, I've made the place I worked with a little bit better than it was before. So, I've had a great passion for that, and I continue to have that passion. In my business travels and other walks of life, I've had a chance to visit other parts of the country. And I don't think I'm telling you anything that you don't already know, but we have a great community here, and we've been given many great gifts. The people who've come before us here in Johnson County have given us things like great K through 12 education, a great vibrant business community, and in this instance, a fantastic community college. And I think it's our obligation to keep these institutions and these gifts that have been given to us at a very high quality, and if at all possible, enhance them and make them even better than they are right now. So, that's why I chose to apply. This is a great institution. I would love to have the opportunity to participate within it and make it even better than it is today, if at all possible. It's a great gift, and I'd like to have a chance to do that. So, why myself? Why would I be better than the other four gentlemen who are in the adjoining room? Well, you have a very important decision before you here in the next coming months in choosing the successor to Dr. Callaway. It is a huge decision. It's probably the most important decision that you'll make in your term of office. I've had a chance to participate in such a decision during my time on the city council, and then after I was on the city council, I had a chance to participate in the selection of the last two city managers in Overland Park, a very comparable type of a selection process. I've seen what it's like. I've participated in it, and I understand what the ultimate outcome needs to be. It is not an easy process. It's one that's very challenging, but I understand what it's about, and I think I could help you very much in choosing that next successor to Dr. Callaway. I also feel like I understand what good governance and good governing is all about. Whether it was my time on the city council, other entities I've been a part of, but also in my professional life, I have a chance to work with numerous city councils, boards of aldermen, water boards, sewer boards, school boards, in my professional capacity. And as I said in my application, I've seen the good and the bad and the ugly of local government. And I've learned and I've absorbed, and I know what it looks like. And I think the key in this position is, is one in which you don't get into a point of micromanaging staff. You set the tone, set the culture, set the direction, set the policy, hire excellent people, and let them do the job. So, I understand what good governing and good governance looks like, and I could sit beside you, I believe, and do that at a very high level. Finally, I think I bring a background which would be very complimentary and helpful to this board, and maybe something a little bit different than what the other gentlemen bring. I have an engineering background. I've been in the business community here for 27 years. I also have had a chance to engage with a technology company here in town and serve as the advisor to the CEO of that company. And I think I bring a business and an engineering and technology background which would be beneficial to this board. And I think when I think about your backgrounds, legal, higher education, K through 12 education, nonprofit activities, I think the background I would bring from a business, engineering, technology background would be very beneficial to this board and meld well together with what's already here. So, with that, that's my -- I hope I didn't go over my five minutes, but that's my presentation. Madam Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Lally, for your words. And we'll start the questioning then with trustee Musil.
Mike, having served with you on the city council, I'm glad you didn't identify the ugly of --
[laughing]
Would you describe, if you would, to the board and then the community that's going to watch this, your overall philosophy of education, and explain how the community college fits into that philosophy, and what role the member of a board of trustees fits into that philosophy?
Well, I'll talk about it from a governance perspective, then come to it from another angle. I think, first of all, local control is very important. So, that's -- and I mentioned it in my application, I think we have to do whatever we can to maintain that, because I think those of you who serve here understand this institution the best and are able to help set the course and the direction in which it needs to go. In terms of my philosophy, and as I think about this institution, I think it's so important that we continue to make that connection with workforce development. It's already happening. It's done very well here. I mean, the award that was given the other night to BNSF just was a perfect example of how well the community college and the business community have interacted together. I think we need to continue to do that. I feel like there could be some, you know, perhaps some improvements in the area of technology and maybe in the engineering community, as I mentioned earlier, to help with that. But I think the main thing from a philosophical perspective is whether we can do to connect the employment activity that's going on here in the community, the business community, with what's going on here, I think is very important. I think, Greg, at the end of the day, though, I think, you know, from a philosophical perspective, it's always got to be about the students first. I think if we always keep that in mind, we'll always make the right decisions. I think when we stray from that and we don't make it about the students, then we start making decisions that probably aren't the best interests of this institution.
Thank you.
All right, Mike. I've got a question, then I'll do a follow-up question. But describe what you consider to be -- and you may have touched on this in your opening statement, but describe what you would consider your greatest strengths that you would bring as a board of trustee.
I think what it is, is really in the governance, in the governing area. I just really feel, John, that I understand the -- what good governance looks like. It's so important to make sure that we know where our boundaries are and where -- what our job's really about. And it's really about setting the tone and setting the policy. And I think I understand that exceptionally well, just from having participated when I believe to be one of the finest local units of government in the city of Overland Park, but having seen and served certain communities in my professional capacity in which that wasn't happening, and how that begins to create dysfunction and discord within a community. So, I think that's something that I understand very well and know where the boundaries are with regard to serving in this position.
Follow-up. What would you consider your greatest weaknesses you would bring as a member of the board?
Do you want my wife to come in here and tell you those things? She's already done a pretty good job. You know, I think probably an element of impatience. You know, I think I'm always wanting to get to a solution fairly rapidly, but one thing I've learned in my city council days, and I had an assistant city manager tell me one day, and she told me, she says, "You know, it's about the process. The process is important, and you've got to let it play out sometimes, and let it work through so that you ultimately get to a solution." And I think sometimes when you're in the private sector, as you know, you can get to a solution a little faster. And so, but I understand there's a process that has to play, and I need to maintain patience about that. And so, and not get too aggressive in pushing it through, letting the process play out.
Very good. I understand fully that. I still have that problem. I can come to a decision pretty quick. I just can't get everybody else to.
Right.
Thank you, Mike.
Sure.
Thanks, Mike. I'm glad that you're here. This is a long question, so I'm going to read it. "The issue of local control impacts many areas of the college's operations, including financing, programming, responsiveness to community needs, and so forth. Describe your understanding of the various issues embodied in the concept of local control, and your opinion of the importance of local control to JCCC's governance."
Well, and I commented on this a little bit on my application. I've lived for 27 years. I saw what, in the K through 12 arena, when we had local control into the early 1990s, what it looked like and what the ultimate outcome was. And I think we had a great system of K through 12 education, and we still do, but it's been an uphill battle the whole time when we can't make decisions regarding how much we want to, you know, where we want the tax rate to be, maybe where we want fees to be, really the overall policy direction that we maybe we would want to set. It's not been a good system when we haven't had it. So, I would hate to see that type of process, that type of system, be overlaid upon the community college system. Now, I think, you know, there's ways still to work with other colleges within the state and to work with the state from time to time, but I would hope that we could keep it the way it is and not let it slip into the system we have now. I think we found that at the state, in the 20 years of experience and observation, that system does not work well for Johnson County. And so, I think we need to do everything we can through legislative action, through talking to our legislators, do everything we can to make sure that we maintain what we have here right now. It's worked very, very well.
Mike, you addressed fiscal responsibility in your application. I know you've had experiences with that as a member of the governing body, but discuss in a little more detail your concept of fiduciary responsibility as it relates to a publicly financed institution.
Well, you know, well, I said earlier, the students come first, Jerry. I think the taxpayers are probably a very close second here. We need to make sure that we respect and understand the significant resources they're providing us. I'm a big believer that before we go back and ask for any more money to the community, or through, or even from the students that go here, we need to do everything we can with what's already being provided to us. So, I will -- my philosophy always is to look at the expense side of the ledger first and to see what we can do better. I know there's been a lot of -- you have made a lot of hard decisions over the last few years. I remember, I think the number may be 12 or 13 million dollars that was, you know, trimmed from the budget here. And I know those decisions were very, very hard, but I think that's the right way to look at things before we go back and look at the -- and see if we can do things better and more efficient before we go back and ask the taxpayers for more money. I do know, and I do understand that there could be a point where, and the city of Overland Park went through this, where they spent down reserves, cut down on employees, did everything they could on the expense side, and they finally went back to the citizens and said, "Look, if you want to maintain public safety and all the things that we do here very, very well, we're going to need a little bit more," and made the case, and the citizens have supported that. And I think, you know, you never know. There could be that day here, and we may have to make that same case. So, I'm not afraid to go to the other side if we have to, you know, go to the citizens and say, "Look, you know, the mill levy's at X. We need to make it Y. We've done everything we can on the other side, but here's where we need to go now."
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Mike.
You're welcome.
Pleasure to have you here this morning. Perhaps the last question we may ask you is, what are the top three issues that you see facing the community college in the years going forward?
Well, I think the very first one, as I mentioned earlier, Dr. Callaway's successor. That's going to be number one, and probably it'd be the most important decision that this body will make in the, probably in the coming years. It really will set the tone. I think the other, another critical issue would be workforce development, continuing to find ways to match what's going on here at the community college with what's going on in the workforce. And then, finally, I think making sure that we continue to make the community college an affordable alternative in higher education. I have two children in college. They go to four-year institutions. I understand the difficulty it is, and to have a, you know, an economical alternative like this here, I think is a very, very important option for people.
Thank you very much.
Mike, I think trustee Drummond may have lied to you, because I think we're going to have one more question.
Okay.
So, if you'll just bear with us here for a moment, I'm going to ask you to kind of explain to us your perspective of the responsibilities of a trustee, both as an individual and as a member of the board.
Well, you know, there's certain minimal things you have to do in terms of, you know, attending board meetings, such as, you know, such as your monthly board meeting, and participating in that. But I realize from being in local government and from having observed other bodies of local government, and those who are really, really good at it, whether they be a city council member or a mayor or a board of trustee, that it takes a lot of study and effort, and you need to, in preparation, in order to do the job very well. And I'm committed to doing that. It's getting to know, you know, staff. It's getting to know the, you know, the people who utilize this institution. It's getting to know, you know, what the facilities are all about. It's a whole host of things in terms of study and spending time here that it takes to do it well. And it just, you can't just do it by, you know, showing up once a month and picking up your agenda and participating in the meeting. You've got to do a lot more than that to do the job very, very well. And I'm -- I understand that, and I've done that, and I know what it takes to do a job like this well, and I'm prepared to do that.
Thank you. That's going to conclude our questions. I certainly want to thank you for submitting your application and, you know, your interest in becoming a member of the board. As you know, this process is going to consume probably the next hour and a half to two hours, and certainly, we would encourage you to remain in the next room until we're completed with the process, and hopefully, we'll see you back at that time.
Okay. Thank you very much. I sure appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Good morning, Mr. Lindstrom. How are you?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
As I'm sure you're already aware, the process this morning is fairly defined. We'll give you an opportunity to address the board for about five minutes and kind of tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the position, what you would bring to the position. And then, we're going to ask you some questions for about 15 minutes. And so, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity, for your service to the college, for your service to the community, and I want you to know I truly appreciate it. Thank you. Early this year, I announced that I would be stepping down as a Johnson County Commissioner. After 10 years of service, I said then, and I believe today, that it was the right time for my wife, Mary, and I to begin the next chapter of our lives. I said that we were truly blessed to have our health, and we look forward to spending more time with our family and friends. I said that Mary and I plan to remain in Johnson County, and ironically, that we look forward to spending more time -- and ironically, that we would find other ways to serve our community. Little did I realize that the future would be here that soon, nor did I imagine that I would be standing here with you discussing the possibilities of being a trustee for one of the finest colleges in the country. I remember my insightful father telling me at times, "We do not always choose our opportunities. Occasionally, opportunities choose us." Regardless of the circumstances, when this opportunity presented itself, I humbly chose to apply for several reasons. This morning, I'll mention five. I believe that the college, first of all, has a firm commitment to excellence in education, and for that matter, everything else they do. I have a tremendous respect and admiration of and respect for the leadership here at the college. Community leaders that I respect and whose opinions I value have encouraged me to seek this opening, and more importantly, they have convinced me that if I were selected, I could have a positive impact as a trustee. And finally, I'm sorry, not finally, the selection process alone, fourthly, the selection process alone, has afforded me a better understanding to the workings of the institution, as well as a greater appreciation for the value on and impact on our community and beyond. In that regard, I would like to note that I recognize the fact that the college trustees do not report to the Board of Regents, as I mentioned in my application. So, I apologize for that. And lastly, it represents a truly unique and wonderful way to continue to serve in and contribute to the community that my family and I love, and that's Johnson County. The community college has been described as a crown jewel of Johnson County for the quality of education programs, responsiveness to the community, and its impact on the entire metropolitan area. It offers the highest quality education programs and opportunities to students and residents of Johnson County. The college is integral to the economic well-being of the community and its quality of life. My experience tells me that education and business are vital components that comprise the foundation of quality life that Johnson County is built upon. Workforce development is the manifestation of education and business intertwined. Public-private partnerships, professional education, entrepreneurship, and the cutting-edge technology programs are prime examples of Johnson County Community College's innovative approach to successfully addressing the practical challenges of our community workforce development needs. Martin Luther King once said, "The ultimate measure of an organization is not where they stand in times of comfort and convenience, but yet where they stand in times of challenge and controversy." When it comes to delivering on the challenge of economic well-being of Johnson County, our extended community, and our quality of life, by King's standards, Johnson County Community College receives high honors. In the coming months, the college will undoubtedly face additional challenges, including the financial challenges of a recovering economy, as well as the challenges associated with the search for and selection of a new president with Dr. Callaway's announced retirement. I believe that I have the business experience, the community and public service record, the leadership, team, and consensus-building skills, and the energy, integrity, and the courage to successfully complement the current board of trustees in guiding Johnson County Community College through these challenging times. It would be an honor to stand and serve with you, converting our many challenges into opportunities through our combined skills and vision. I look forward to your questions, and I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much, and we'll start with trustee Musil.
Dave, I think one question I always would rather you answer is how to fix the Chiefs.
Good luck with that one.
15 minutes left.
I asked Mike Sharp if he had any recruits in the Great West Conference.
Describe your overall philosophy of education, and then talk about how the community college plays a role in that philosophy, and how a member of this board trustee, trustees group could play a role in that philosophy of education.
Well, first of all, I think the reason this community exists in the first place is because of the foundation of education. And I, growing up in Massachusetts, we believed that, in Boston and in New England, that we had a fine educational system in our family. It was one of the most important things we could do, is to make sure that we had an education, and our parents saw that we got that. In fact, the, I would tell you a story. I grew up in a blue-collar family, and sometimes getting an education creates the need of sacrifice. I had, coming from a blue-collar family, my dad couldn't afford to send all of his kids to college. So, I learned really quickly that you have to make these sacrifices. And the sacrifice my dad made was that he took a job at Boston University as a groundskeeper, because that was the only way he could afford to send his kids to college. And all of us were able to get that education at Boston University if we chose to. What he didn't know is that we would all be six foot six, and many of us, two of my brothers actually played pro ball as well. So, we had opportunities to go elsewhere, but all but one of us went to Boston University because of the sacrifice my dad made. So, it is tremendously important in my family, in me personally. And I think coming to Johnson County was very fortunate for me. I didn't know where I was coming when I first came here, but landing in Johnson County was one of the best things that ever happened to me. I didn't realize how wonderful a community this was until I got involved and I got plugged in. And I realized very quickly, not only through our K through 12 education, the excellence there, but the excellence here in the college. Fortunately for me, as a former professional athlete in this area, I was asked to do some things and maybe exposed to some of the amenities of Johnson County more than someone else would be more quickly. And I quickly realized that the college was integral to what was happening in the economy of Johnson County. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Thank you.
Dave, I'll ask the next question, and then I'll have a follow-up. But describe what you consider your greatest strengths that you would bring as a board of trustee.
I think my sincerity, my working hard for this community, my passion for this community. I operate, many of you know me, but I operate on a principle of what's called "air." I think having a positive attitude, doing what you say you'll do, and treating other people the way you want to be treated, no matter what you do, whether you're trustee, whether you're a professional athlete, a business owner, a community servant, I think you'll be successful with that type of attitude. And I think that's one of my strengths.
I would agree with that. Follow-up is then, what would you consider your greatest weakness that you would bring as a board trustee member?
I like the Chiefs.
That's okay. That's perfectly fine.
Maybe not saying no often enough would really be. I truly, if I can do something, I'll try to do that. I don't know if that answers your question.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Thanks, Dave.
I have a long question. "The issue of local control impacts many areas of the college's operations, including financing, programming, responsiveness to community needs, and so forth. Describe your understanding of the various issues embodied in the concept of local control, and your opinion of the importance of local control to JCCC's governance."
Well, I'm going to give you maybe not quite as long an answer. I learned a little bit about local control when I first ran for public office. And it was probably negligent on my part for not being more aware of it, but I learned very quickly from people I was associated with that the best government was closest to the people. And not only in that first foray, but when I ultimately subsequently became a commissioner for Johnson County, I learned very intricately that the best way to govern for our community was with the elected officials making decisions on taxation, on the impact that constraints might have on the elected people who have been placed in positions of trust and decision-making by our electorate. by our electorate. And so I am very cognizant and supportive and think that those, I can only imagine that those principles also apply to being a trustee here at the college. So I would be supportive of local control. I stated such in my application, and those are the reasons why.
David, you discussed fiscal responsibility in your application. You've certainly had experiences with fiscal responsibility at the county. Discuss in a little more detail your concept of fiduciary responsibility as it relates to a publicly financed institution.
Well, I think it's a fine line that you all have to walk, and that any elected officials, especially local officials, have to walk when there are demands to provide services with a limited budget. And by limited budget, whatever the taxing ceiling is, that would be the limited budget. Of course, the fine line that I refer to is, at what point do the need for more services require the elected body to determine whether or not they want to increase revenues, which they have the authority to do, and the ultimate impact that would have on the constituency that they serve? So that is, I think, at least from my experience, the, what I would consider financial responsibility is having that empathy for not only providing services or programs for the people that you serve and fulfilling your responsibility, but also balancing that against the burden that that may place, or the willingness of your constituency to say, "This is the program I want, and I'm willing to pay for it."
Thank you.
David, thank you for being here this morning. We really do appreciate it. I want to give you an opportunity to perhaps highlight some remarks you made at the very beginning, and the question I have for you is, what do you see as the three largest challenges lying before the college in the next few years?
I don't even need to look at my notes on that one. I think balancing the financial challenges that I spoke of, there, our economy is recovering. In Johnson County, we've fared far better than other parts of the region and nationally, and so we're, I think we're in good shape, and we're getting better. But balancing the financial budgets of the college would be one. That would be the most eminent. I think just behind that is the selection of a successor to Dr. Callaway. And thirdly, and I can expand on any one of those three if you'd like me to, because I think I do have some thoughts about what I can bring or have brought to the county in that regard. And then finally, and probably just as important is maintaining the excellence that the college has achieved over the last 40 years, and in particular, the last few years. You all know it as well as anyone, this is an outstanding institution.
If you could just take a second, please, and talk about the first one, the financial challenges.
Well, if our valuations are going down, we have to, and we want to provide the same services, we have to look at what's going on with either being more efficient or generating revenue and making the tough decisions of saying that, is this what our constituency wants? Do the people of Johnson County want to maintain the excellence of this institution, and are they willing to pay the cost to do that? My understanding is the control in that regard is about 45% of the budget.
Thank you.
You mentioned that you would be able to provide some additional information as to what you might bring to the table on all three of these issues, and I'd like to ask you to go ahead and share that with us.
Well, I, particularly, I think I was referring to the second and replacing or finding and searching the new president. The last two years at the county, I have been involved with, first year as vice chair for Chairman Illett, and Chairman Illett asked me that first year to be the liaison of the mental health. And mental health had some issues going on within their board, and also they were looking for, to replace David Weeby, who was retiring after 25 years of excellent performance at that helm. I was able to help them, I think satisfactory in Chairman Illett's eyes, to such a degree that the following year, he asked me to serve as a liaison at the library. And last year, we replaced our librarian after seven years at the helm. And so I think I bring some skills in that regard of at least offering some opinions and watching, and so I think I bring something there, too. That was what I was referring to.
Okay, thank you. And just one final question. If you could briefly tell us, what do you view the responsibility of a trustee to be, both as an individual and as a member of the board as a whole?
Yeah. Well, I would say that you are stewards of the assets of this organization, of this institution. And as such, you're responsible to set policy, policy alone. If you're looking for someone to, for a full-time job, or if you're looking for someone to micromanage, then I'm not your person. That's not what this was explained to me. That's not what I do. I'm not a professional in that regard. But if you're looking for someone to oversee and set policy and support, then I think I can help you in that regard.
Okay. Thank you very much. And the process will continue for the next hour and a half or so, so we certainly welcome you to stay in the next room and wait until we're finished, and hopefully we'll see you come back in, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Good morning, Mr. McKeon. How are you?
I am very well, thank you very much.
Good. I think we're waiting for everyone to kind of make it back. It's been a long morning for us so far, so...
I heard you've been here since 7:30?
Yeah, that sounds about right, yes.
All right.
Well, I got here at 6:00 and cooked breakfast.
I wish I'd been invited at 6:00.
Apparently, truthfulness is not part of the regime today.
Well, I've been awake since about midnight, so I was ready for breakfast about that.
Well, thank you for submitting your application to be a candidate for the board. We certainly appreciate your interest. And as I'm sure you're aware, there's a fixed format we're going to follow here this morning. We'll ask you to spend about five minutes telling us a little bit about yourself and addressing the board, and then we'll have about 15 minutes of question and answer. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, well, thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning to address all of you and you. I am a native Kansan. I don't know how much history you know about myself, but I grew up out in southwest Kansas, not western Kansas, southwest Kansas, very remote part of the world. I attended the University of Kansas, and I met my wife my freshman day of orientation, and we've been together and married for 31 years. So in that, we have two daughters, Jessica, who is 28. She and her husband Brent live on Long Island. She is a graduate of Kansas State University, an educator, and Brent is in finance, and he is working for a hedge fund. And we heard great news that Brent and Jessica are going to be moving back to Kansas City, this area, in December. They've been gone since 2008, and we're glad to have them back. In addition to that, Katie, our youngest, she's 27, she attended the University of Kansas, and they graduated from Baker School of Nursing, and she is employed at the University of Kansas Hospital. And very proud of both of our girls, and they have been enjoyed our lives. Also, I am an owner and president of my own firm. I do have a business partner, Randy Cobal, but I have been in business in the financial services industry for 27 years, specifically the last 17 as an independent wealth manager, managing clients' assets in that period of time. My office is in Overland Park, and enjoy this industry thoroughly. Compliance can be a headache, but we monitor that and do what we can do. You know, again, I thank you for being here. I'm here today because I want to continue my involvement and my commitment, one, to my community. I'm going to go back to my children, the days that they were in grade school, I assisted and participated in helping them coaching their basketball in their elementary gyms, carpeted gyms. It's always interesting and fun. I've built props for cheerleaders and drill teams, and I have built theater equipment for plays, and it's been a lot of fun. All of you have probably done some similar volunteer work and commitment to your children and their schools. I knew someday, and hopefully my kids would graduate and move on, and that I could be involved maybe in some other things. And owning my own business and being in a vibrant community that we have, I was continuing to see the growth that Johnson County was experiencing, and I was always curious to know who was behind all of that. And I had a real sincere desire and interest to be a part of that. I didn't want to be hearing the news that Overland Park was going to build their world headquarters, you know, in Overland Park, Kansas, or that Olathe was going to be host to Garmin and their world headquarters. I wanted to be in it. I wanted to be in that circle. I wanted to help, I guess, make those relationships and encourage those businesses to continue to grow. I did not want to find out about what was happening through the media. Sorry if there's any media here, but I really wanted to be able to tell the media what was going to be happening and what we were engaged to be doing as far as growing our community. So that, again, is why I got involved several years ago. I seeked out, this probably been about 15 or 17 years ago, three individuals in our community that I felt were leaders that could help me at least with some ideas on how to become involved and how to become committed to a purpose, to our community. They referred me to three others, and the pearls and the nuggets that I took away from these successful business people, and all of them, you would know if I mentioned their names, they just said to get involved. Harlan Parker, a great friend of mine, just said, "Simply figure out what you want to give and give it." And so that's what I did. Unfortunately, he picked up the phone and called the Chamber of Commerce that day and told him that, first of all, he asked me what I was going to be doing the next hour, so he called them and said, "Brent, you need to go to the Chamber of Commerce office, and they're going to sign you up for a membership." I said, "Okay." So I did, and he said, "By the way, don't forget to take your checkbook." And so I've been very active in community interest through chambers of commerce, public policy councils, have done numerous events for those specific entities, and have enjoyed it immensely. As I said, I just really wanted to see at the table. I wanted to be able to share my ideas and collaborate with what was, you know, happening in our community. Education has always been important to myself and my wife. Education in our community, as you well know, and through the Community College, this is a major resource for our area, and I just wanted to help be a voice and continue to provide leadership in different areas. Some of the strengths that I have, again, are building relationships, collaborating with individuals, making and establishing new relationships, and continuing to make those grow. I've worked on several boards, civic groups, community groups, talked to address groups about education and the importance of funding education at all levels. And again, I have been a supporter of that all of my life, especially since being here. We have always worked to achieve a win-win, and obviously, that's what we want to do. And as far as being here today, that's what I would like to be a part of, is this vibrant organization that I know is interested in students first and being a shining star in our community. I know how important it is to have us in this community, and I just appreciate the time to be here.
Thank you very much, and we'll start our questioning with trustee Musil.
Brent, you addressed this in your application, you talked about it in your remarks today, but your overall philosophy about education, and it's kind of its general role in society, and then how does a community college fit into that? And how would you, as a member of the Board of Trustees, fit into your general view of what education means?
Well, as far as Johnson County and the Community College addressing the needs of our community, again, I think students first has always been important, I know myself and my wife, I know the importance of having that quality education component, being able to have an educated workforce, but also having a place for this educated workforce to be and to grow, not only locally and regionally, but nationally and globally. I think it's important that you or we, as a community college, we are always listening and in tune with our community and what the needs would be, what are people asking for. And I think that we should step up and do that and be willing to openly listen and discuss those. Thanks, Greg.
Right, Brent. You probably touched on this in your opening statement some, but describe what you consider to be the greatest strengths that you would bring as a member of the Board of Trustees.
I appreciate the question, and I would say that my greatest strength is relationship building, communicating with the community and the public, listening to their, again, needs, and I think maybe addressed, but listening to what their specific needs are so that we as a board, we as a group, can meet what they need. And, you know, the history of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees has always been a group of integrity. They have, I felt, always have listened and have always provided the answers to what the community and our students are asking for.
Great. A follow-up question is then, if conversely, what would you describe as the greatest weakness that you would bring as a member of the Board of Trustees? This is always a challenging question.
My wife's not here.
That's the second time we've heard that.
Oh, really?
We know who runs.
Have you heard that, am I interviewing for the president's position? I thought that's why I was here. Good question. Clearly articulating. I'm trying to come up with the words here. You know, I'm always prepared, and sometimes I would say that, and being on Planning Commission and other groups I've been on, not waiting till the last minute to open up your board packet. You know, I think, I was on the Planning Commission at Olathe for eight years, and sometimes I'd get my packet a day before till it started coming electronically, and sometimes a day before was just not enough for me. So I don't know when you get your board packets, but I hope it is an ample time to allow me to review, because a lot of times I didn't feel like I had time to do that. And I'd say just making the time, John, to stay up late and understand what the issues are.
Challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hi, Brent. I have a long question. The issue of local control impacts many areas of the college's operations, including financing, programming, responsiveness to community needs, and so forth. Describe your understanding of the various issues embodied in the concept of local control and your opinion of the importance of local control to JCCC's governance.
Good question, and I want to continue to learn more about local control and the effects, not just on our community college, but I am an advocate for local control. I think I shared that with you, my responses to the questions that you had asked of the candidates. I think that having... I think that having a voice that we can speak for ourselves as opposed to a voice that's streaming from Topeka or from a larger scene, a national scene, is not what we need. As I believe I addressed before, that gun control, for instance, could be a serious issue, I think, across campuses, all across the country and having the ability to have local control to control that issue, I think is critical.
Brent, you described your feeling toward fiscal responsibility and your many involvements with the boards you've been on and with the chamber at Olathe. You certainly have had this experience, but discuss in a little more detail your concept of fiduciary responsibility as it relates to a publicly financed institution.
Good question, Jerry. And being in the financial world, fiduciary responsibility is a word that we hear a lot of. You have a large budget here. You have a very large budget, but being and having that fiduciary responsibility and being good stewards of the resources that we have and how we can best utilize those and get the biggest value for our investment in our education, in our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Brent, thanks for stepping out and applying to this position. We appreciate you taking the time and the commitment to do this. You touched on this a little bit in your discussion at the opening and then partially through some of the other questions, but what would you see as the top, the three top issues facing our community college going into the future for the next three to five
One that comes specifically in mind is making sure that we understand what the world globally is expecting from our educated students and what our students are also expecting when they step out into the workforce for their vocation. Understanding more of the need of how we can meet the future need. I imagine this governing body has taken a look at that over the several years through their strategic plan and I imagine it's just been tweaked over the past, you know, three, five, seven, and 10 years. I don't think there's been any drastic wholesale changes, I would doubt, but just making sure that our strategic plan is in line with the overall goal for our students and our community.
Thank you very much.
Brent, can you give us your perspective of what you see as the responsibilities of a trustee, both as an individual and as a member of the board as a whole?
Board of trustee, this body should be to carry out the mission of the college. Students first, community also in that top line and again, meeting the needs of our business community. As far as responsibility of a Board of Trustee individually, again, I think it's getting out and being involved, listening, maybe not doing as much talking, but just listening to what the needs are and the demands would be placed and again, just articulating that information back to this body. I have worked for the last 15 or 17 years in all four corners of the county and the circles of city and county government and I really think that communication and collaboration and sitting down and discussing what's on your heart, what's on your mind, do that openly, honestly and work to resolve if there are issues or whatever the outcome is that we're trying to achieve, that it is a win-win for everyone that has association with this community college.
I have one final question for you. If you could share with us any experience you might have in overseeing or administering large organizational budgets, you alluded earlier that that's a big part of the fiduciary responsibility of the board, so could you share with us any experience you might have that you could bring to the table?
And quite honestly and frankly, the budget this size, I have not had that experience. Chambers of Commerce, yes, I have. As far as managing a budget and managing finances, helped raise some money for JCert for a short period of time. By the way, there was an error in that response. I don't know if any of you caught it or not. It said $700 million was raised for that.
Wondered about that.
I hope you guys realize that was not correct. But, you know, fiduciary responsibility is a big part of our responsibility to a budget and our community and being good stewards of what is here. I don't have, again, as far as large, as large as this one, that type of experience, but, you know, books are books and accounting is accounting, finance is finance and whether you're dealing with 28 million or 283 million, you know, we all have to understand where it's coming, where it's going and be the best stewards of that dollar.
I would agree with you. Thank you very much for taking the time to apply for the position. We're gonna be here for probably another hour or so.
Perfect.
And so we welcome you to stay and
I will.
And then come back in at the conclusion and thank you again.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Brent.
Good morning, Mr. Sharp. How are you?
I'm great, thank you. How are you?
I'm very well, thank you. As I'm sure you're aware, there's a kind of a structured process here. What we will do is we will allow you five minutes to address the board, kind of tell us a little bit about yourself and what you feel that you would bring to the table and then we'll have about 15 minutes of question and answer. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Well, I appreciate, first of all, I'm very honored to be here and to be invited, to be a part of this process. It's certainly an opportunity for myself to begin to engage in civic community service and the opportunity now presents itself that I didn't have prior in my profession. And as my family gets a little bit older, the opportunity to get out and serve the community is now presenting itself. I'm a lifetime resident of Johnson County Community College, grew up out in Stanley, Kansas, back when it was Stanley, Kansas. One high school, three elementary schools. So I've certainly seen the development of Johnson County and the community college itself. Came to the community college as a youth for sport camps, took classes at Johnson County Community College. My family still utilizes the community college and I find that this is an opportunity for me to come forth and provide a perspective, a unique perspective, a perspective that doesn't have an agenda, a perspective that can represent the constituency of the community and do what I can to help the community college move forward. I have a degree in higher education administration, have worked at higher education administration, or I'm sorry, at higher education institutions. I've taught at higher education institutions and in fact, worked here at Johnson County Community College for a period of time, taught classes here as well. So, in a nutshell, that's a little bit about myself. Again, just looking forward to the opportunity to meet and visit with you all today.
Thank you. And we'll start the questions with trustee Musil.
Mike, you've got a long history in education and so this hopefully won't be, we don't want to make the questions too easy for you, but
Why not?
Interested in your overall philosophy of education and then how this community college fits into that educational framework and how you, as an individual member of the Board of Trustees, would fit within your educational philosophy.
Well, I certainly think that in reviewing the mission and the values of the college, to me, as an educator, they're quite simple. I mean, they're to the point and they are what they are, which is to, you know, to serve the student and to keep the student at the forefront of everything that you do. And I certainly think that as a board, you have to remember that all the decisions that are made, all the discussions that take place should always go back to the student and what is going to be best for the student, keeping in mind everything that the community college does for the community itself, the economic development, the development of working with the businesses in the area to continue to make community college and the community of Johnson County strong.
Thank you. Mike, glad you're here today.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Stewart, all right. Thank you.
Heard that in a while.
In front of your peers.
That's right. That's why it was funny. Okay. Going downhill here. Describe what you consider to be the greatest strengths that you would bring to the board as a member.
I appreciate that. I certainly think that one of the strengths that I bring compared to the other candidates that you're interviewing here, which by the way, you know, again, is why I'm honored to be here, because I recognize the individuals that have been brought in and I understand the years of service that they've brought to the community and to the state. But at the same time, I think it's an opportunity for a breath of fresh air, a new perspective, someone that politically doesn't have any allies or enemies. I'm somebody that's new to the public game and I think that I'm a citizen, you know, I'm a citizen of the community and this is an opportunity for me to share what I believe can help the community college move forward and do it in a constructive, positive manner.
Very good. A follow-up question and we probably could have brought Brendan to answer this question, but we're gonna ask you this, so.
I appreciate that.
What are the greatest weaknesses that you would bring as a member of the Board of Trustees?
Probably some of the greatest weaknesses that I have, my lack of willingness to delegate and some may see that as a strength, but I know that if you are unwilling to delegate or share responsibilities, then you can, one, become overwhelmed and, two, become narrow-sighted or nearsighted in what it is that you're trying to do and not gain additional perspectives. So that would probably be a weakness.
Very good. Good answer. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us today.
And should we point out there's no relation?
Yes, I was gonna just give you grief about spelling your name wrong.
And I guess when you're sitting there, you can do that.
I can't. No, he's sharp. They think it's funny, we hear it all the time.
All the time.
The issue of local control impacts many areas of the college's operations, including financing, programming, responsiveness to community needs and so forth. Describe your understanding of the various issues embodied in the concept of local control and your opinion of the importance of local control to JCCC's governance.
Well, I, you know, local control, I think, you know, it's rather simplistic. I think it defines itself in what it's called. It's local control. Therefore, those that pay taxes, I think, should have, you know, the ability to have input on how their taxes are utilized. And so, when the people of Johnson County are asked to support taxes for the community college, then they should have the opportunity to come forth and demonstrate or voice their opinions. At the same time, I think that the opportunity for local control shouldn't be one where you wouldn't be willing to access additional opportunities, whether it be funding or services or resources, to enhance what it is that you're trying to do locally.
Thank you.
Michael, in your application and the response to the role of a trustee, you referenced fiduciary responsibility. Discuss in a little more detail your concept of fiduciary responsibility as it relates to a publicly financed institution.
Well, I certainly think that there needs to be some responsibility and it has to be done in a manner in which the use and the monitoring and the investing of the funds of the institution are done in a way that are responsible. And I think that certainly, when you have a board, you'll have discussions, agreements and disagreements on how money should be invested, how it should be spent, how it should be allocated, things like that. So, the opportunity to be on a board and recognize and understand the different constituencies within the campus community of how those funds need to be allocated for the betterment of the institution.
Thank you.
Michael, thanks for stepping up and coming in this morning and
No problem. You guys have had a long morning.
Yeah, putting their name before us. You've touched on this in a couple of different places, but I'd like you to drill down more specifically, if you could please. What would you see as the top three issues facing the community college in the next five years?
Well, one easily could say, you know, finding another well-qualified, insightful leader for the college. That certainly is gonna be a top priority within the next five years. Additionally, economic development, continued economic development, continuing to build and establish new relationships with corporate partners in the community and continuing to demonstrate and be a community leader in the county. I don't know if that's three or maybe four, but
They're all connected.
Those would all be right there at the forefront.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Mr. Sharp, you've given us a roadmap, if you will, of the issues that we would, that you would have us look at over the next few years. Can you briefly explain to us what you would bring to the table in terms of accomplishing those goals?
Well, certainly, I think that I could bring to the table an openness, a willingness to listen and learn, research, investigate, go out into the community, seek input from the community itself in what their feelings need to be and where we need to be headed and what we should be focused on. I consider myself just a normal person, just somebody with common sense, no hidden agenda, an opportunity to come and serve and be a part of the community college that I've grown up with and been a part of and it's been so important to me. I, like I said earlier, I was born and raised here and I've chosen to live here and the community college is a major part of that reason. Easily could have lived, you know, in Topeka or Lawrence or whatever, but, you know, the county of Johnson County is such a strong and vibrant county and the community college is so vital that I think that I'm passionate about education. I love education, obviously. It's a standard bearer for this county. The college provides an opportunity for affordable education, affordable higher education. The recent opportunities that have been created to allow students that do attend the community college and have aspirations to going on to a four-year institution, knowing that their classes are gonna transfer without any reservation, I think, is enormous. And while that sounds like a very simple principle and should probably always have been in place, I know that it wasn't and it was probably a very difficult task to get completed, but, you know, a huge hurdle that was completed and makes the community college a much more attractive and affordable option for many, many students.
And kind of as a follow-up to that, and you've touched on this a little bit already, but specifically, what do you perceive as your responsibilities as a trustee, both as an individual and as a member of the board as a whole?
I think certainly, serving as an ambassador to the college is important. Again, going back to the fiduciary responsibilities, making sure that the monies that are received are being spent appropriately and not frivolously, making sure that the college remains a community leader in whatever means is necessary, but never doing any of those things at the expense of the ultimate goal or the ultimate mission, which is serving the students.
You mentioned fiduciary responsibilities and I'd like for you to tell us, if you can, if you have any experience in managing large organizational budgets or anything of that sort that you could bring sort that you could bring to the table.
Well, as I served as the Director of Athletics for seven years at an institution, and we had an operating budget of several million dollars, which included scholarships, operating budgets, salaries. And I was directly responsible for managing that, making sure that the monies were allocated and utilized appropriately, and then going and arm-wrestling for more money when it was needed, and then having to go back and massage egos when it wasn't received. And so, budgeting, you know, it's a basic responsibility for the board.
I think that concludes our questions. We certainly thank you for taking the time to submit your application and to submit yourself to us this morning as part of this interview. As you know, we're going to be here for probably another, up to an hour or so, to make our decision ultimately, and so we certainly invite you to stay and wait until we're ready to announce our decision.
Well, I appreciate that.
And hopefully, you'll come back in to await that.
And again, I thank you so very much again, and I understand that the candidates that you brought in are very qualified, and I wish you all the best of luck in making your decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beautiful handwriting.
I think we're ready to begin. Good morning, Mr. Wood. How are you?
I'm fine. How are you this morning?
Very well, thank you. Thank you for being with us this morning.
My pleasure.
We have a structured format here this morning, as you know, so we'll offer you about five minutes to tell us a little bit about yourself and what you feel you would bring to the table as a trustee, and then we'll have about 15 minutes of question and answer. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, of course, those of you who know me will find out, know how difficult it's going to be for me to confine my comments to five minutes.
I have the gavel.
But I'll do my best. For those of you who are not acquainted with me, I'm Douglas Wood. I have a private, well, I'm in the process of withdrawing from the private practice of law. I've been an attorney for a lot of years, and most recently, I've served 12 years on the Johnson County Board of County Commissioners. And in that capacity, I had the opportunity to work on various liaison positions, those that I feel are extremely important in relationship to Johnson County Community College, one of which was with the Workforce Investment Board that Dana serves on, also with Juvenile Justice, which Dr. - my mind's gone blank - Drummond has served on and worked with, and also in Johnson County Mental Health. Each of those positions and other positions do relate to building up the community of Johnson County and also working in conjunction with the mission that Johnson County Community College has in preparing workforce for those living and working in Johnson County, and also preparatory work to go on to a full, four-year college degree. My interest in Johnson County Community College is principally to maintain and enhance the integrity and academic mission of Johnson County Community College. I have certain pet sayings that my children have probably tired of hearing, and a lot of my clients have heard over the years, and those sayings relate to, there's three important decisions a person makes in their life which determines how they live their life, one of which is in respect to their faith in God, second is in relationship to their education, and the third, whom they marry. And those who make wise choices in those regards, I think, live a satisfying and productive In addition, I also have a saying or advice to clients and students, and that is encouraging them to be future-focused. And what that means is to be willing to delay momentary gratification to achieve a higher goal in education and thus in life. Johnson County is extremely blessed in having Johnson County Community College here. I don't need to tell you or the audience, but I do recognize that Johnson County is, if not the premier Johnson County, you know, Community College in the nation. It certainly ranks in the top 3% if not higher. I believe that it's been blessed by having good leadership, Dr. Carlson and Dr. Callaway, who unfortunately has decided to retire from here. This board will have the challenge of picking his successor, and hopefully, we'll be able to do as good a selection as those of the past. I think I'll stop it there and let you go ahead and ask questions. I do think that the Community College needs to develop partnerships, more partnerships within the community, the business community, and also look to the business community for input in helping to shape the mission of the Community College.
Thank you very much, and we'll start our questions then with Trustee Musel.
Doug, you mentioned as one of your key life choices, one of them is education. Tell us a little about your educational philosophy, and then how the Community College fits into that and how you, as a trustee, would fit into that.
Well, I'm not certain what you mean by philosophy, other than liberal arts education. In other words, I'm probably one of those characters that, or I am one of those characters that likes to view the Discovery Channel and the History Channel and have an interest in continuing learning. And I think that the students deserve the opportunity to develop the skill of being critical thinkers. I'm afraid that our society has, not in Johnson County, but much of the country, have allowed students to graduate from high school, and sad to say, I believe even at some higher learning institutions, with degrees without having learned to be critical thinkers. So, that would be the goal that I would like to instill in everyone associated with Johnson County Community College, students, faculty, administrators, trustees. I'm not sure I can answer the rest of your questions, though.
Thank you.
Doug, I agree with one of your statements you had about maybe delaying momentary gratification for something greater in the future. I think that's good advice to give.
Yeah.
Could help a lot in this community and country. My question goes to ask you to describe the greatest strengths that you would bring as a member of the Board of Trustees.
Well, age and wisdom, life experiences. I grew up in South Kansas City. I graduated from Southeast High School. I won't say what year necessarily, unless asked. At a time when Kansas City School District was an excellent school district. I won't try to identify what caused it, but it has declined, as we all know. My practice as an attorney, working with families, I've been principally a family lawyer. Even years past, referred to as a country lawyer, if I had lived in a small town or in the country, but people have people problems, and they need someone who understands them. And I think that I'm that person. My wife and I have been married for 44 years. We have three children, the youngest of which is adopted and has had, and at the time, we adopted her, she was nearly five, and she has some issues from having experienced neglect and abuse, which prompted my wife and I to be more aware of, and in some degrees, involved in the mental health community. Having raised three daughters is a life experience in itself. I think that serving in the community, in the Board of County Commissioners, and in those various capacities I previously mentioned, gives me additional insight into the community in which we live, and I mean the county, not just the cities, although I have lived in three of the 20 or 19 or whatever number of cities there are left anymore. And I believe those qualities, as well as having learned from life experiences, when to sit down and shut up. So, yeah, I think those lessons have been, are valuable, and I think that would be helpful to this board and to the community, and I mean, in this regard, the community here and Johnson County Community College, the teachers and the students.
Kind of a follow-up question is, conversely, what would you consider the greatest weaknesses that you would bring to the board? Always a challenging question.
Well, the weaknesses, I think, would be, well, you know, sometimes strengths are also weaknesses. And in the legal profession, as Greg can tell you, a good many attorneys are perfectionists. And I think that sometimes is a weakness, and so we have to be aware of that. There is a difference between being so wrapped up in the details, you don't get anything done, but that shouldn't, but that's not the perfection I'm talking about. I'm talking about being certain that you have your checklist and you go through it. I suppose my greatest, on the other side of that coin, my greatest weakness probably is I have a tendency to procrastinate. I don't know about the rest of you, but if I had to identify a weakness, that'd be it. But that's why there's deadlines.
I think we all struggle with that, Doug.
Thank you.
The issue of local control impacts many areas of the college's operations, including financing, programming, responsiveness to community needs, and so forth. Describe your understanding of the various issues embodied in the concept of local control and your opinion of the importance of local control to JCCC's governance.
Well, I'm aware that there have been efforts in the past to bring us under the Board of Regents' authority, and I don't believe that would serve this institutional, this institution or this community well. And the reason is, there's a certain degree of jealousy between what happens here in Johnson County and the rest of the state, which could be, if brought into the system, could be deleterious to this institution. I can't think of anything worse happening to this institution. In reference to local control, I think this institution, in the sense that it serves the community, needs to be responsive to the community and what the community leaders and business sector is telling us what we need to be looking at, what we need to prepare for, in offering opportunities to our students to build a career. Now, I, this may be heresy in the intellectual and educational system, but I don't believe it is absolutely critical that our young people get four-year college degrees. If they do, that is great. But there are opportunities, as the Community College has developed a curriculum, that allows people to get associate's degrees, certifications, and meet, and achieve certain other levels of recognition that add value to their lives and to this community. I would much rather see someone get a degree or certification or trade that meets, that makes them happy, that adds value to this community, than to get a four-year college degree that, sad to say, in some cases, in a lot of cases, is nearly worthless. And then they have to struggle to pay their student loans, they have to struggle to find an opportunity within their educational degree. We need, we need more high school advisors and college advisors, and I think Johnson County Community College provides that opportunity to give good advice to young people about preparing for their life, their future life and their careers. Obviously, not only have I a four-year college degree, I've got a law degree, but, and I'm not unhappy, but there are people who are more suited for things that make them happy, and they shouldn't be misled into getting some kind of a degree that doesn't suit them. In reference to local control, and is, if we support the institution, taxpayers of Johnson County have a right to have certain expectations that serve the community well and the student body, and what better way for them to do it than to elect the trustees of this institution?
Doug, you've certainly had a lot of experience as a member of the Board of County Commissioners in fiscal responsibility. Describe in a little more detail your concept of fiduciary responsibility as it relates to a publicly financed institution.
Well, my philosophy first starts with recognizing the fact that it's not my money. Just as an attorney, when I take funds in from a client and put it in a trust account, that's not my money. I have to spend it the way I'm required to. I have to spend it the way I'm required to by personal integrity, by professional code of conduct and ethics, and what is laid out by the collective decisions of the board, to meet the goals that the public has identified through their elected representatives. So it's like, so my philosophy is that through the collective discussions and hearing of the needs that come before the Board of Trustees by the leaders of the college, the executive directors and his or her staff, is of paramount concern. It's not what Doug Wood would want to spend it on, it's what we collectively want to spend the money on that meets the mission.
Thank you.
Doug, thanks for taking the time and stepping up to go through this process. We do appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity of appearing for you. I might add that from the caliber of people that have been chosen along with me to be interviewed, you can't go wrong with any one of those individuals.
Thank you. My question for you is, if you could take what you've said and what you know about Johnson County Community College, what would you see in your vision as the two or three largest challenges that may be before us in the next five years?
Well, once having been a student and having to pay tuition, books, and fees, that's going to be a challenge. Two, the taxpayers of Johnson County need to value this institution and show that willingness by supporting it financially, understanding what it is that they're buying, what they're paying for. And that's the future success of Johnson County economically, productively, and intellectually. Business community is a vital part of that. So I would encourage more public-private partnerships, whether in the academic program or in financial contribution. An endowment fund being set up to encourage students to pursue certain paths for their careers. We have an extremely good situation now, I believe, in the relationships we have with KU, with the Edwards Campus, and the Research Triangle opportunities. Dr. Colaway can tell you that when the Research Triangle was first presented, you know, I made efforts to have a portion of those funds set aside for scholarships for Johnson County residents, aimed at primarily assisting Johnson County students, Community College students, to go on, whether it's KU or elsewhere, K-State. Wildcats for tonight. But those are the challenges, economic challenges. There's going to be some cultural challenges. This community is changing culturally, and we need to be prepared for that. We need to be receptive to that, to be relevant not only now, but in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes our questions. Thank you very much for sharing your time with us this morning, and you are the last candidate to appear before us, so we'll be going through the process now of making our decision, and certainly we, we welcome you to stay and, and wait until that decision's been made.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I wanted to explain briefly my understanding of how our process is going to go, and certainly I will invite Richard France to interrupt me if I get something wrong here in the process, but I, I think I, I understand what we're about to do. So at this point, what we will do is each trustee will be given a ballot on which they can, thank you so much for cleaning up my mess, on which they can indicate their two choices of the five candidates who have appeared before us this morning. Those two choices are written on the ballot in no particular order. It is just, they're two of the five that they believe should advance to additional voting. We will then step from the room and tally those votes, and any candidate who receives two or more votes collectively will be put forward for an additional round of voting. And that second round of voting then will permit the trustees to select their one choice of that smaller list. And at, and we will continue with that process until such point as we have one candidate who has attained a quorum number of votes. So with that in mind, I think we're ready to pass out the...
There should be an initial ballot in each of your packets.
Is that the one with the timeframes on them?
No, it looks like this.
It has two lines.
It's in the packet.
Madam Chair, just so I'm clear...
It says initial ballot on it.
A quorum is four?
Yes.
A quorum is four, that's correct.
Yes, I did.
Go back to that algebra.
Initial ballot at the top.
Does everyone have one? I have extras.
And since these are open to public record, we'd ask you to sign those, and we'll keep those as part of the record. And then I think...
I believe that's right, yes.
You did a good job of narrowing the field down a bit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Really good candidate. They're going to be doing some tallying.
What do the exit polls show?
I won't.
I'm Carl Rose.
Is that everybody? Okay, I believe we're ready to move forward. The initial, the initial ballot has resulted in three candidates being brought forward for additional voting, and those three candidates in alphabetical order are Michael Lowly, David Lindstrom, and Brent McCune. Each trustee will now select from those three the one candidate that they would like to vote for, to move forward, to fill the vacancy. We will then step out and assess whether we have a quorum at that point, or whether we need to reduce the pool to two for an additional vote. As you can see, I'm handing out another ballot, which means that the final ballot, which will be labeled as the first final ballot, if you would please indicate on this ballot, second final ballot. The first final ballot has resulted in us narrowing our pool of candidates to two, and they are, in alphabetical order, Michael Lowly and David Lindstrom. We will now vote for one of those two candidates, and we will hope that we will receive a quorum of four for one or the other. A little late for that. We'll be back. I am prepared to make a motion at this point for our vacancy, but before I do that, I would like to again thank the five candidates who appeared before us this morning, who got up on their Saturday morning and came in and answered our questions, and took the time to open themselves up to us and express an interest in providing community service as a part of our board. It was a very difficult decision. What you don't know, that everyone else in the room knows, is that we had a number of votes in order to get to this point, and so certainly a credit to all of you and the quality of candidates that we had to choose from. So with that in mind, it is my privilege to make a motion to appoint and elect Mr. David Lindstrom to fill the unexpired term of former trustee Dr. Don Weiss, and I will entertain a second.
Second.
And any discussion? Yes.
I just wanted to, we had five outstanding candidates, and this was very, very difficult because, you know, all of you personally, and I know you all are very good people and care about the Community College. I want to encourage those that haven't, assuming the vote passes here, that weren't selected to stay involved. We have spring elections coming up. We have many things going on in presidential service. Stay involved in the process. You're very good community servants, and I appreciate that one. Thank you for putting your names forward for this page.
Any further discussion?
I just mentioned, there are 25 people that took the time to stick their necks out, and when you're sticking your neck out, 24 of you there's going to be cut off instance. And you guys, I know all of you, and this was my first time through this process, I don't really like it at all. It's a lot easier to go into a ballot box and do your secret ballot than do the votes like this, but what it showed, and I hope people, once they read who is appointed, won't give up on the process. I'd love it if they'd go back and watch it when it comes on and see, see the quality of the five people that made presentations here, because it's a credit to this county and frankly, the educational commitment that you have and your parents have.
Yes, trustee Cook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The decision obviously was very, very difficult, and each, each of you have something very unique to contribute to this board. I was reminded of a friend that was devastated when he did not get a supertenancy that he thought he should have, and I said to him, Dean, look at it this way, that community had a tough decision to make, and they just probably weren't ready for your services at that time in terms of the degree in which they were presented, and I thought a lot about that, because there have been times that I went after a position and didn't receive it as well. And so to do that review of the strengths that we have, and you all address your strengths very, very well. So again, I want to congratulate you all for taking the time to go through the process, and like John and Greg, I know each of you, and to some degree, it's been very, very difficult, but I thank you very much for the process.
I would just echo the comments. My colleagues have been in other boards when we've gone through this process, and I, several times in fact, and I've never been on a board in which we've had as many fine candidates for one position as we had this time. And the fact that the five of you were the finalists and made it this far says a lot about your commitment to the community, a lot about your willingness to serve, a lot about your character. And I trust that whatever way you choose, that you stay involved in Johnson County Community College and in the community, because you all bring very, very valuable assets to our community, and thank you for doing what you've done.
Yes, trustee Stewart.
I want to clarify something, because I said I want you to stay involved in the process. I'm really not encouraging you to run against the incumbents.
I'm glad you clarified that.
But if, if we don't have four incumbents running, please. Thank you.
Any further discussion? With that, we're prepared to, I have a motion in a second. We're prepared to take a roll call vote.
Trustee Musil?
Yes.
Trustee Stewart?
Yes.
Trustee Sharp?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Drummond?
Yes.
Chairperson Reel?
Yes.
Motion passes on a six oh vote. Congratulations.
Yes, I, we're, that takes care of our business, but certainly, Mr. Lindstrom, if you'd like to say a few words before we adjourn, we would invite you to do that.
Well, I echo some of the comments that were made. First of all, thank you very much. I'm humbled, and I will tell you that frankly, when the list of finalists in the 25 were published, I thought very strongly that either I put my cleats on and get ready for this, I mean, I'm humbled with the, with the quality of the candidates as well, and echo the comments that were sent, but thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, we stand adjourned.